Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council and the Needles Public Utility Authority and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency in Needles, California on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. Council Executive Session is at 5:10. The public may also attend via Teams. Know to join in the live meeting, go to the City of Needle website. Call to order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
President.
Evans.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Recede the City Council meeting convene a joint count, I'm sorry. Joint Council, NPUA meeting, call to order, roll call, has previously been taken, public comments pertaining to the executive session will be adjourned to executive session. Go ahead, Dale.
Your Honor, I actually have a conflict on one of our executive session items.
Okay.
Item B?
B.
B. I'll have to step out of the room on that one.
And that's because you work in the cannabis industry.
And it's possible conflict with cannabis issue.
Now, I have a conflict on item 13 because I have a property near where the property is discussed.
I have a conflict, do I say this now, John?
You can say it.
I have a conflict on the Women's Club issue. Because I just was installed as president last week of the Women's Club, and even though this was started before, I just will step out for that vote.
And that's item number 21.
Okay.
Dale.
Conference with real property negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8. Real property, 3.18 acre vacant parcel described as generally located on the southeast corner of East-South Lake Drive and South Riverfront Parkway, Mojave Valley, Arizona, APN 21614007. Agency negotiating party is City of Needles as potential seller and Robert Raskin as potential buyer under negotiation price and terms of payment. Item B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and/or 3, one potential case. And then item C, NPUA slash council, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, one case, Rio Buena Vista Association et al. versus City of Needles, case number CI VSB 2028439.
Executive Session report by City Attorney.
Yes, the council met an executive session, item A was conference with real property negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8. The real property is described as 3.18 acres of vacant parcel described as generally located on the southeast corner of East-South Lake Drive and South Riverfront Parkway, Mojave Valley, Arizona, APN 21614007. The agency negotiator, City Manager Rick Daniels or his designee. The negotiating party is the City of Needles as potential seller and Robert Raskin as potential buyer under negotiation price and terms of payment. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item B, Councilmember Longacre recused himself on this item because it involves potential litigation related to cannabis. And this item is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and/or 3, one potential case. There was no reportable action taken. Item C, NPUA council, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, one case, Rio Buena Vista Association et al. versus City of Needles, case number CI VSB 2028439, and no reportable action was taken on that item. And that concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you. Meeting called to order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join with me in standing while I give the invocation and while we're led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Zachary Lopez. Pardon me, excuse me.
All right, boss, that's all right.
Old age. Our Father in Heaven, Russ's town and its citizens, guide our council and city staff in their judgments and deliberations. And bless those who travel the desert highways to come to our crown jewel in the desert. In God's name we pray, amen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will make a motion for excuse absence from.
I will move to excuse the mayor.
Can I second?
We have a motion to second for excusal. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt. Longacre.
Yes.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll second it.
Have we a motion to second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest, I believe they've already been reported. Did you want to go through those again?
So just really briefly, again, as I mentioned before, Councilmember Longacre recused himself on item B because it involved potential litigation involving cannabis and he works in that industry. And then Vice Mayor Pageant, I understand you have a conflict on item number 13.
That's correct.
And then Councilmember Campbell has a conflict on item number 21. Yours on number 13 is a conflict because it's within 500 feet of property you own.
Yes.
And then Councilmember Campbell is recusing herself on item number 21 because there's an item there related to the Women's Club and she serves the president. It's not a legal conflict because it's not a compensated position that she holds on that board, but she's recusing herself to avoid even the appearance of impropriety.
All right, thank you. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents? I'd like to introduce former City Councilman Terry Campbell is here with us this evening. Thank you, nice to see you, Terry. Also, we have former Councilmember Sean Goodman, so it's good to see you, Sean. Thank you.
Sam.
Yes.
And Sam.
Oh, pardon me. And of course, Tim Drell, who sits in the front all the time, and Tim, it's so good to see you here every meeting and keeping track of the city, even though you're no longer on the City Council. Thank you.
Welcome, Anthony. Happy.
He's a, and he's hired, he's doing a first-class job. He's already found a number of problems.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you wish to speak on parliamentary procedures?
Yes, I can. The rules of procedure that have been adopted by the council that govern these meetings include the following. The mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair of the meeting. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. Any council member desiring to question the administrative staff shall address this question to the city manager or city attorney, who shall be entitled to either answer the inquiry himself or designate some member of the staff for that purpose. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. The mayor and council members shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to city employees, and to the public appearing before the council. No member of the council shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Members of the public attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council.
Thank you. As a courtesy, those intended assets' cell phones be turned off or set them in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address this NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the Vice Mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
213 Safari, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the council, I would like to encourage everyone to vote on November 8, and by in doing so, go to the polls to do so rather than use the paper ballots that come in the mail because it will help reduce some of the voter fraud we're experiencing. And it's much more pleasant in the Catholic Church, too, and you see people that you know. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sola Johnson-Eiler. I live on 13 Santa Fe Circle. And we are having a golf tournament for dyslexia, so we are wondering if anybody else wants to put in money for the golf tournament or to set up a team. It's on, what's this month again?
October 22nd.
October 22nd. And what it's going to is to test kids for dyslexia so they can go to a certain program so they can get teeth differently, so they can be more successful. And so kids could have a better learning, could have a better learning place. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and we hope we have a good attendance at the golf tournament for dyslexia on October 22nd.
She's a tough act to follow. My name is Joanne Pogue. I live at 2004 Cortez Street. And I'm here to announce that the Women's Club of Needles is having an indoor rummage sale at the center on October 22nd from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're taking donations for gently used items, whether it's clothes, household, yard, et cetera, et cetera. So clean your closets out, bring it to the Women's Center by October 19th, and we'll set it up for sale. The funds will be used to help fund scholarships for seniors, high school seniors this spring. So, thank you very much. I have no paper, but it's on the Needles Women's Club Facebook page as well as Needles Buzz and Nextdoor Needles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yeah.
So my name is Mary Ann Jones. My address is 837 Beach Drive, Needles, California. And I'm here to tell you that the museum's open. And we currently completed our first month. And when people come into the museum, we try to get them to sign in. Not everyone signs in, but it's sort of fun to see who signs in and where they're from and how they found out about us. So the first person that signed in asked us if we knew the Belt family. So they were relatives. But we have on this paper, we have in a week's time, we had a person from Berlin, Germany, Argentina, another person from Germany, another person from Spain, along with New York, Texas, and then on the side, you'll see how they found out about us. So it's always interesting to know, you know, what they're doing here and how they, like the one person, they went and ate at Munchies, and so they told us, told them about us. So anyway, so spread the word about the museum. We're open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00. And if anyone wants a special, a special day that we're not open, we're up to that, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hello, my name is Denise O'Dell. I live at 302 Vermont Avenue in Needles, California. I have a question about the four big building, Grow Houses, out on Highway 95. Those buildings are very big, and they're going to use about four megawatts. Can and do we have that much electricity to provide that to them? And if we do plug them in, is it going to strain our grid? And do we need to build a substation for them so we, as the citizens of the Needles, don't have rolling blackouts?
So, because, Mayor, because of the Brown Act.
Yes.
You know, I just wanted to let the Speaker know that the Brown Act prohibits the council members from engaging in discussion about things that aren't agendized, but staff can make brief comments and response.
I think contact the City Manager, Lisa, and he will explain to you what the situation is with that specific matter. All right. Any other public appearances? Anyone else want to speak? If not, presentations. A ten-minute time limit per person applies. Frontier Representative Douglas R. McAllister, Vice President, External Affairs, to give Power Point presentation regarding the Frontier Fiber capabilities for Needles residents. Mr. McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Doug McAllister. I'm the Vice President of External Affairs for Frontier. This is going to be short. I spent a lot of years on your side of the dais, getting a lot of information that I didn't want to know. And so I'm going to try not to answer questions that you don't have. So I'm going to try to go through this fairly quickly and then give you time to ask any questions you might have to ask if you have any. Otherwise, if you don't, it's going to be really short. One of my roles here, before I get into the presentation itself, and can we put that into presentation mode? By any chance? One of the roles, I kind of like, the big reason I'm actually here tonight is to introduce myself to you. My role with Frontier is, it's rather new. I was recruited to come back to the company the first part of this year. I was with Verizon a long, long time ago, about 10 years ago, as their Director of Government and External Affairs. And the Frontier, Frontier, everything purchased Verizon, as you may know, and then about 10 years later, which is now, they recruited me to come back. The purpose of my role is represent the sea change in how Frontier does business. And we're going to talk about that here in a little bit. But one of the things, and one of my roles, as far as I'm concerned, was to make it very clear to them that they may pay me, but I literally do work for you. My role here is, and one of the things I hated when I was in office, I was out of Murrieta, I was the mayor of Murrieta. And one of the things I hated was walking into church or walking into a grocery store or walking someplace in public and having a citizen come up to me and lambass me for something. And I'd have to look at them and go, I have no idea what you're talking about. And kind of my goal here is to be available to you. City Manager has my cell number. He's free to give that cell number to you. The purpose for that is that ideally, we'll provide you the information you need. If anybody has any questions about what I'm about to tell you about. But if something happens where somebody asks you a question, you don't know, that's what that phone number's for. You either call me or have your City Manager call me, and I want to make sure you get the information you need so that you can have, you know, you can get back to that constituent and take good care of them as well. So that's kind of the main reason I'm here. I want to go through quickly here what we're about to do here, and I hope I do this right. It works. The, this is not a quote from Frontier. This is my quote, but it's why I came back to the company. What they have decided to do is something that a lot of utilities have forgotten to how to do, I think. It simply is that their attitude is they're in the middle of the biggest building history all over the country, massive, massive fiber optic buildout. And it's huge for them, and they've just come out of bankruptcy a couple of years ago. They have a new leadership, they have a new board, and now they're in the process of trying to re, you know, do things better. And their attitude that I've observed is simply this, is if we're going to do something bigger than we've ever done, we had better do business better than we ever have. And that's part of a collaborative outreach. I've already met with your team a couple of times. We're going to be moving into the building around December, hopefully be done by March. And but rather than come in and start pulling permits and telling you, here's what we're going to do, and I hope you guys like it, what we're trying to do is work very collaboratively with your team so they help us design and tell us what we should and shouldn't do and make sure we do this the way that you all want it done. So we don't add unnecessary angst to what you guys have to deal with every day. And so that's kind of why I'm here. We're bringing fiber optic to the community. You have that already. I was able to meet former councilmen here early on. We've had a nice discussion. I'm going to do the best I can with my CEO, but I'll do my best. I'm not sure we're going to that. But this fiber optic is not, you will not see any of the video on there as far, you have, it's a streaming option. So this is the, this is the capacity for internet. It's a fiber network that is 100% fiber from our central office, which is around the corner here, all the way to the side of a house. There's no copper involved in this, and that allows us for some incredible speeds. Households that can connect to multiple devices, I, this one, that bullet point there, I'm not going through all the bullet points, I'm going to just do three of them, so don't worry. The, this one blew me away. I did, read a study that said the average household has 22 devices. And I said, that can't be true. That just can't be true. And then I got, well, there's my wife and my cat and me in my house. And so I started looking at that, and it was, I've got, I think I've got 15 devices in my house, and that's just the three of us, two and a half of us. And so that 22 kind of sounds possible at this point. The problem with that many times is that the more devices you put on this, the slower things go. And that's what will not happen with this, with this product here. And then the third thing, and I'll stop with this third one, was the high-speed internet is up to 2 gigs of speed. We have three offerings, 500 up and down, and that is, that is symmetrical, not asymmetrical, that's symmetrical. It's both up and down. We have a 1 gig up and down and then 2 gigs up and down. And we'll talk about that more in a second here. These are the prices for that. This is not for the purpose of selling, so I'm going to pass by this really quickly and move on to, here's how it works. Like I said, there's the central office, and what you'll see with the build here is that we'll start with the central office. It goes to what's called a hub, the number 2 there, which is 200 to 300 or 400 customers per hub. Then from there, that's usually outside of a neighborhood, then that goes into a, into a terminal there that serves the individual homes and individually into the side of the house where it hooks into the homes there. This is what you will see when it comes to the development and to the construction. A lot of it's going to be, I believe, aerial, so it can be real easy. And then there's probably 25 or so percent of it that's going to be in the ground. We try to make sure that we are letting people know we're coming. There's, the last thing you want to do is have the constituent get up in the morning and walk out to get their paper or their coffee and find our truck out there, and they didn't know we were coming. And now they're not, or they're knocking on the door saying, you got to move your car. What we try to do is alert people at least 48 hours, if not 72 hours ahead of time. We put signs out. The little guys on my left are, it's two sides of a door hanger. And then anything else the City Manager and his team ask us to do to make sure that people know what is going on, so they're not surprised. It falls through. And I can tell you right now, you're going to get calls because if they're like me, I don't go through my front door when I go home. I go into my garage. And so my front door is a collector of door knockers. And so every so often, I go out there and I grab them all off and throw them away without even looking at them. And so we'll have some of that as well. And we're trying to do our best to see to it that we communicate with folks so they're not surprised. But if they do and you get a call, you call me, and I'll take care of it. This is the general build here. You can see it's about 2,100 addresses. And once you go, this is focused not on businesses, this is focused on homes. So it's about 2,100 addresses there. It says 6535. I think when we met with the team, Rick, maybe correct if I'm wrong, we determined that it's more like 7525 because some of that in there is like, is Native American jurisdiction and such that we'll be working with them on that as well. But the 65%, 75% of the fiber placement is going to be existing conduit or aerial, which is very simple. And then the rest of it is going to be in one of our methods, where we're either boring or trenching or micro trenching. Like I said, here, we want to start in December. I'm not exactly sure when we'll start seeing permits here. They may have already started, for all I know, and we hope to be done by March of 2023. And when we start, that east side of the Highway 40 is probably where we're going to start first. And I told you it was short. Do you have any questions? I went through fairly quickly.
Good question by the council.
It's very short. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Once again, my phone number's for you. I would ask that you don't hand it out to everyone. We have systems in place, but when that system breaks, then you call, you call me. And so feel free to use that number anytime, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Item 2. PowerPoint presentation by Project Manager Kathy Roche regarding capital improvement projects. And I understand you're going to give us one down on what's going on.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor and the City Council members. I'm Kathy Roche, Projects Manager. And PowerPoint is coming up before you. Thank you. Before you tonight is the fiscal year 23 Capital Improvement Program. And it's just a status update of all the projects we have going on. The first projects I want to talk about is the park projects. There's three of them. The Duke Watkins Park Improvements, the First Beach Marina Beach Park, Jack Smith Park, biking and walking trail. We'll talk a little bit more about those. But again, can you go to the next one?
Meet them up with a change. I'll get it fixed.
Try it again.
There we go.
All right, so first, we're going to talk about the Duke Watkins Park Improvements. Right now, it's currently in design. We've got 65% plans. We just received an amenities package, which includes the splash pad, the water splash pad that you see there, the bike, the bike pump track. That's ongoing. We're in review with that. They're going to, as we review those plans, the consultant is moving forward with the 100% plans and specs, which we expect to have in December. So once we receive those, we go immediately out to bid, so we anticipate opening bids in January of 2023. And the lower left there is also just kind of a picture of the restroom. There's also a new restroom facility going in there. The First Beach Marina Beach Park, that's a conceptual plan that you see there. It just started design. They're currently doing the survey, their base maps, and they'll be working on the 35% design supplemental, which we should have here in the next couple of weeks. They're trying to catch this project up to the Duke Watkins plans, and possibly we will bid them out concurrently. But this one is a little bit behind that one right now, so we're anticipating those plans maybe February, hopefully before March, but we have March on the schedule right now. The Jack Smith Park biking and walking path, you've probably seen this before. It went, it went out to bid already. The design is complete. The bids came in over budget, so we're working with the contractor now to scale down the project just a little bit, and I think we've worked something out that this should be awarded soon. Water system improvements, something you guys know a lot about. Recently, a $14 million, approximately $14 million amendment was approved for these water improvements in front of you, the Lily Hill Booster Station, the L Street Pump Station, the water line and manifold replacement, the Well 11 Treatment Facility and Backup Generator, the Well 15 Backup Generator, and the Well 11 to Well 15 Transmission Line. And I have a map up there that just kind of shows most of it there. It was hard to get it all on one map. The Lily Hill Booster Station and the L Street Booster Station are, are under contract. They've been awarded. Um, they're working through all their equipment and materials and metals. They're nearing the end of that. So, um, they're ordering all of their parts and pieces. And we'll be ready to mobilize here in the next month or so. So they're, they're working through that now. They're waiting for some materials to come in before they actually mobilize to the site. Same with the L Street Booster Station. It's a little bit behind that one. They're, they're still submitting, but, uh, they'll continue. There's some metals and be mobilizing probably again before the end of the year. The Well number eleven Treatment Facility and Backup Generator. Uh, this project is unique. It's going to be a design build contract. We're working with the contractor right now. Um, they have submitted a basis of design report, a detailed construction estimate. And we're reviewing a contract, um, that we're gonna take before you guys here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the Water Line and Manifold Replacement. Uh, this, this portion of the project will come a little bit later. However, the design is already complete. It's ready to go to bid. So, once we get the other portions, the other projects going, you, you'll see this one come, go out to bid and come before you for award. That's the Ener-type project. I'm sorry, I gotta, this is the, the Well eleven to Well fifteen Water Line Ener-type Project. This is the transmission main that goes down there from Well eleven all the way to Well fifteen. So this one is currently being designed. The last one was the manifold. I apologize. The manifold comes later, once everything's in place and it kind of pieces everything together. All in one spot, all of the water lines come into that man- manifold. This one is the transmission main between the two wells. Um, it's, like I said, we, I believe it's before you tonight for award of the design. So it's, it'll be moving to design. Um, if awarded tonight here and later this month. Street improvements, uh. I'll just run down these real quick right now. Under construction is the Phase Three Water Service and Street Improvement Project. Phase Four will follow in design. The Needles Highway is a, a needle, is a city of needles, San Bernardino County project that's currently under construction. We'll talk about the Colorado Ri- River Bridge Deck Project, um, that ADOT is administering. And then the, the Obernolte Water Service Replacement Project that is currently funded, but waiting for, uh, the E seventy-six from Caltrans. Uh, like I said, that right now, the, uh, Water Service Replacement Street Improvement is under construction, the Phase Three. Uh, they removed the asphalt. They are replacing water services. And in about three to four weeks, they'll start paving that back. Uh, this is just a map of what streets are under construction right now. The next phase, um, working on that proposal right now. It'll be coming before you for design here in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully the next council meeting, you'll see that. And there's a list of streets will be covered on that program. The Needles Highway Segment One B I mentioned is under construction. Some of you may have already seen that. Um, it's anticipated to be completed, uh, by November. The Ri- the Bridge Deck Project by ADOT. Um, they have hired a contractor. They went out to bid. It was awarded. Uh, they anticipated starting construction the end of this month. However, they are waiting for materials. They're waiting for the, the bridge bearings. So that's been delayed a little bit. So they're hoping to get started with the, with the replacement of the bearings by the end of this year. And then once they do that, they'll move into construction on the, on the bridge, uh, around the first of the year. Now which way? The Railroad Underpass Project, another project you're probably familiar with. We're still working with BNSF on the agreement. Um, they do have a new representative now. We're talking to that person and trying to get this agreement moving forward. So hopefully you'll see that soon. We contact them weekly. Um. And I've yet to talk to the new person, uh, directly, but I believe Patrick has, so we're trying to work through this and have it in front of you soon. The Obernolte Water Service Replacement Project, it's been, um. Funds have been earmarked. They're, they're on the list. We're, again, we're just waiting for the notification that we can proceed with construction. This is the, uh, Caltrans Project, the Monument Sinage Freeway Ramp Cleanup and Beautification Project. They've also just recently awarded the contract. They're getting ready for construction. Um, they're in the early phases of, of some of the pre-construction activities. And they'll be starting this project towards the end of the year as well. You'll start seeing them mobilize. The Needles Golf Course Irrigation Efficiency Project, um, this is again before you tonight on the consent agenda. And, uh, if awarded tonight, that design will begin and we'll be ready to, to advertise for bids here, um, early twenty twenty-three. The Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project, the smart meters. This consists of the residential electric meters, also the water meters. Um, this project is currently, the infrastructure has been put in for that, working through the networking. Um, and testing meters, starting here in the next couple of weeks and actually installing meters in November. Now, the water, the water meter portion, those water meters, um, are on back order. And so they don't anticipate receiving those meters until January. And so those, um, meters won't be installed till February next year. And that's all I have. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions from the council? Yes.
How long will it copy down to one lane? Was it that six months that was on the, on the thing?
The total construction is six months. I think they're anticipating approximately four months. Um, yeah, it is a process. Uh, concrete takes a while to cure. They're only doing one side at a time, so.
Other questions, I guess. Jeanne and Kathy, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
MPUA Council. Public comments pertaining to the MPUA Council items, a three-minute time limit per person applies. Was there any public comments?
My name's Judy East, six six three beach. So the reason that I'm, uh, coming up here, uh, first of all, thanks for the opportunity. Um, I feel like I need to sort of be a voice for the park that I live in. I live in Verde Shores. Um, it's a fifty-five and older park. And we've had some complaints about our meter reading, um, being irregular. And, um, it really got bad, uh, last month. This last bill that I received is twice as high as I normally pay, um, with the same usage. Uh, my average bill in the summer runs about a hundred and fifty dollars. I have a twelve by sixty mobile home. I keep my thermostat at eighty-three degrees. And I have a single mini split in my house. Um, that is a bill for my summer months. My regular months are anywhere from sixty to seventy dollars, let's say. Because it's a heat pump, so I'll be using heat in the, in the wintertime. But when I called, because my mom, you know, the, a lot of us in there, not myself, are on fixed incomes. And, um, when you get a three hundred dollar bill and you're used to eighty dollars. And you get nine hundred a month in, in income. That's something that the seniors are gonna have a hard time paying for. And what I was told when I called was, um, they weren't gonna do anything about that. That the guy that was doing it was fired and that, um. That somebody is saying that, well, he didn't do, he didn't bill enough one month, so you're just gonna have to pay it on the next month. And I'm sorry, that's not, to me, that's not acceptable. Um, you know, you're speaking of an additional hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars out of a person's budget. And that's not a high income area, right? I mean, um, so my question is. What is the plan? Cause I have one person telling me that they're gonna give us some, like, average it. What is our normal typical? And then credit us back because there was an error. Not our error. It was a higher error and great. We have this gentleman wherever he went. Wherever he went. Um, I used to manage that park, um, for a year. So I would like to know what's gonna be done for these people and, and I'm throwing myself in there too, because my bill is three hundred this month. And it's, that's, um, not our error and we shouldn't have to pay for that. So I would like to know what's being, gonna be done.
All right. But thank you very much. And before we go through a whole series of other people coming up with the same complaints. We recognize the problem. We are going to address it. You, you happened to become up before we were able to tell you what is going on. And we are going to be explaining now for the next few minutes of what happened and what, and, and answer your question. Okay, so it is on our agenda and, uh, we'll be, we'll be giving you what we think is, uh, satisfactory answers to your questions. Thank you very much. If you'd like to give it, that's fine. Uh, you, you certainly, uh, I'd just like to reassure you. That, uh, I, I think that after you hear what is going to be proposed, uh, you'll be more satisfied.
My name is Judy Billings.
Hi Judy.
I also live in, in Verde Shores. I'm at six eighty channelway. So I'm on the next street over. And, uh, yeah, my bill was over three hundred dollars. So I call, I, actually, the, the month before, two months before that. It, I was up over two hundred dollars and I called on that one. I didn't get anything there either. Uh, they'd come back and they'd read the meter. But to me, I mean, there was no reason for my bill to be that high. The next month then, there was no reason for my bill to be that low. But then this one comes and it's triple what it should be.
Yes.
So, and I'm told, as Judy was, they, no answers. They can't tell me. They can send somebody out to read the meter again, but that's all they can do. And so again, I'm here to find out what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Error that was made. Thank you.
We're glad you're here. We can, we'll have a chance to explain.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Again, I'm Denise Hodel. Um, I have a question. Um, back in September, Hodel, back in September of last year. It was brought to the council's members' attention, um, that we were trying to put aside one percent of the ten percent cannabis tax. To a rate stimulation fund, which was never, which was under the rate stimulation fund. Could have been used to bring down the rates for the citizens and businesses of Needles. Why was that tabled and never brought back up? It was told to us that Ellen Campbell was to make a motion for ADHDOC committee. And this was never even brought back up to the table.
Great question.
And another thing, I am here. I work for a doctor in town. I am here to advocate for my patients that need their u- their utility bill and can't afford to pay their utility bill. They're on a fixed income. They're older. They have medical equip, the medical equipment that they need. If they can't pay their payment, they're afraid their electricity bill would be turned off. Now mine per se went from a normal six hundred dollars a month, which I do pay every month, to thirteen hundred dollars. Now everybody says, oh, you have a big house. You have a pool. Well, I've always had a big house and a pool. Okay? Hasn't changed in twenty years. So what I'm here to say, I get, I can afford to pay my bill, but there are some people that cannot. And I feel bad for them. So they have asked my doctor to write them, um, prescriptions to send to the city. They have a seat apnea, they have to have that. They have oxygen tanks that continuously run to help them breathe. This is a real concern. Please address it.
Thank you very much. You, you certainly brought up the, the numerous, uh, complaints and, uh, questions that everyone has in this whole, in this whole matter. And we hope that in the next few minutes, you're gonna understand, uh, what the city's position was here and what they're gonna do about it. And, uh, we certainly apologize to everyone who was inconvenienced. And with that staff report.
Start by saying that overall responsibility, city operations, utility operations, best with the city manager. And as the city manager, buck stops here.
Is Mike on?
So what I want to run through what has happened and what is being proposed. First of all, I too have talked to probably fifty, uh, individuals who have called the concern and complaint or an issue. Our billing office has probably talked with two hundred and fifty people and issues, concerns. Generally what happened was the. Meters are lightly read accurately in John. In August, for some reason. Many bills were half or even less. Now, when you get ten votes, they may be got an equipment problem. Uh, once it cross twenty and fifty, there's a human problem. And that meters either were being estimated, they weren't being read. Both of which are systematic failures. And. So what I put in place immediately, members of the council and members of the public. Is that there will be no shut offs at all until this matters is all. There will be no late fees at all until this matters is all. We are dealing first with the people who brought their particular issue to us. But we are going to do an audit of every single one of the three thousand accounts. Because it could be all three thousand. It could be some portion. We don't know at this point. But we do know that there's probably two hundred and fifty that are problematic out of the three thousand. So that's almost ten percent. That's a big number. That is a big number. And so we, first of all, there will be no late fees and no showers. Second of all, we have, and I introduced Anthony. Anthony's a tremendous individual. He's a, a local, I'll call him a kid, but he's in his thirties. Um, but I'm seventy, so everybody looks. Um, he knows the city. He knows the streets. He knows the neighborhoods. He knows many of the deep. But Anthony's the kind of guy also that will pick up your newspaper and bring it on your front steps. Or he will, I mean, that's just, he's a, he's a very caring, uh, individual. And I, I believe, uh, I've hired the right person. He's being trained. Uh, he's just completed his first full cycle of all fifteen routes. So, uh, but he was trained by individuals who knew those individual routes. And while water meters are simple, because there's the street, there's the house, meters in between. Electric is something different because it could be on the right side of the house, could be on the left side of the house, could be on the back of the house. Uh, could be on a pole. We have one that is a block and a half away from the house it reads. Now, that's nonsense and we, we're, Anthony's helping us clean up that. And Anthony's helping us clean up that to where the meter readings is logical and rational. Uh, and I think he uh will continue. We've responded to every customer that has brought billing error to our attention. But I want to make sure that after tonight, when the council provides me direction, that, that. Our staff knows exactly what this council wants to. And it's my job to make sure to drive that right through these. And it is my absolute intent to solve every one of these problems. The city owns this problem. And I apologize that the problem happened. But I'm doing everything I can to make sure that this is corrected and done right. So we are also, as I mentioned, we're gonna audit every single account. Because not only. So it was properly read here and then it was underwritten here. And let's just use three hundred dollars. So the, on the second month, this three hundred dollar on customer, kind of bill for a hundred and fifty. So the next month, when it was read. It add, it layered that on top, so the next bill became four hundred and fifty. That's not right. And I, and of the people I've talked to, there have been personal hardships created. Ice flow. The average age is older than ours, there are many people on fixed incomes, uh fifty seven percent of the population, that's some form of government assistance, and I think that includes my wife's social security checks. But there are many people in that situation, and after talking to fifty. I understand. And so we presented the matter to the utility board, uh, who has responsibilities. And, and then agendized it here. Now, during the utility board's discussion. That. In that month where the meter was under red. Power was delivered and was used.
Two months under it.
Or misread, or misread, okay, yeah, let me, let me, yeah, this, this right. Uh, yeah, and some of them, some of them were one month, but there are.
Mine definitely.
Surprise me at this. So. The first thing they did was to recommend that, A, no late fees, no shut offs. The second was that for the power that you did use, that we would lay out a payment plan up to a year long. So let's say for that hundred and fifty, in my example, that you got under billed. So for ten months, you paid fifteen dollars above what your normal bill was with no late fees. No shut offs, no interest, no service charge, is just spread that out over time. There are. Before this, there were about a hundred and thirty-three customers that were on some form of long-term payment plan, right?
Fifty one.
And as a result of this event, that number is now up to one fifty one. So some people have already gone on to this long-term paying. There's also, um, the number escapes me, but i- if you are low income. Within the federal definition. You're eligible for what's called HEAT. Which is a county utility assistance program. And with all by dozens and dozens of families supporting, somewhat medical. To make sure that that lifeline of power supply is available. There's also during the COVID, there were, there were grants that the city received to help write down and for eliminate uh past dues. Many can't, and we uh continue to.
How much money is in that part you just spoke of?
So what, what? As an employer and as someone who's had personal discussions. Fifty beings. Uh, I also recommend. That the city. Not utility, but the city. Buy a modest credit. To every single utility account. For the error. Follow the self-imposed fine. Penalty for this per. And it will come out of the city's general fund to the utility that will apply that to every customers. That. Right now, I'm looking at twenty-five dollars. Which it isn't. Doesn't move the earth, but it is, it represents apology. It represents commitment to clean it up and for the terrible inconvenience that's, that's happening. So. That's where we stand today. I'm asking for council direction to approve that approach. Back to your question on, uh, the city received a grant. Open. Uh, that is. Was, I believe, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we received in uh July one.
What do we have left of that?
We have four hundred and either sixteen or sixteen. I didn't use slots. Uh. But. What we, I, what I can't do. Right now is, in order to spend that money. I have to show a link to COVID. That it was a COVID caused thing.
Good.
I can't do that. In this case, because it wasn't COVID related, but give me a couple of minutes and I'll get to how we can finesse them.
I, I have some other questions too.
Okay, just a minute, we've let him finish and we'll.
So that, that's basically it, we, we have hired a new meter reader, we are going to correct every error. We are going to, uh, I'm recommending, uh, as council discretion to, to do a. A modest contribution for the disruption. Um, and we want to get this, we want to get this resolved properly. As quickly as possible. So I'd be glad to answer any questions of counsel.
Thank you, Your Honor, go ahead.
Um, I have a few, um, first off, this is the second misreaded. Run that we've had this year because in uh April, I came to you with a misread and we reread it, and it was. Misread by the meter readers that resigned. Then we hired this new one, and three months ago, I came in and said my bill was exceptionally lower. I didn't want to come across a huge bill in three months again. And after the last time, I actually sat in your office and asked it, if there is a misread and, and there's extra charges. They should be separate on the bill, like in nice little red lettering that says, misread June, hundred and three dollars. So it's not, when you open your bill and you go, oh my God, I owe twelve hundred dollars, so that's not really the case, and uh. I asked for that three months ago and we didn't get it, and now here we are again, um, I already paid my bill. Had it deducted in the office, I still think it was about seventy-five dollars more than it should have been. Some people can't afford that extra seventy-five dollars right now. Um. This is a screw up on us. Nobody else, um, in those two months of misreads, how come our staff didn't miss? Twenty thousand dollar discrepancies in cannabis growths? Because I can tell you, my farm had a nineteen thousand dollar discrepancy, how does staff not notice that? That is my question. Do we just wait until three months, until two thousand people call in and, and excuse my French, bitch about it? Because that's what's happening, and now we have to deal with it. We should have deal, dealt with it three months ago, when I complained, as a counselor complaining that this isn't right. And we didn't do anything about it. So now we're here, oh, well, it's our fault, but you still owe us the money, we're gonna give you a year to pay it. It's kind of crappy. These people don't deserve this. This was our mistake, the pizza parlor delivers me two pizzas and I ordered one and my kid eat half of it, I ain't paying for that second pizza. Just the way it is, it's the cost of doing business and you screwed up doing the business. Someone missed those reads for two months, missed them. Nineteen thousand dollars isn't a hiccup. It's a choke. And that's all I have to say.
Well, let me, let me correct, because when you brought to uh my attention, the underread that happened in this March, were there?
April, it was April.
April. Um, we had re-reads done and did everything we could to correct those.
Yes, and then I asked, I paid that bill fine, and then asked, we should be putting on the bill. Separately, so people understand the concept that there was a misread, not just. Call up because I have a huge bill and I don't understand why I have a huge bill, it was a simple thing that I asked for in April. And you decided it wasn't worth messing with.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We, we, I, I have to interject, we've got to be careful not to talk about individual council members' personal situations, because if we're gonna do that, then the council member needs to go up here, but if we're talking about the, the problem as a wholesale problem, that's, that's more appropriate.
Well, we did.
I'm not a rate payer.
Well, you are, and you can speak as rate payer, but you need to do it from here, not as a councilman.
No, I'll, I'll, Mr. Mayor, I, I can respond. We did uh take, start taking measures and we. The previous meter reader was.
Last two.
The, the previous, the, the one that had, was reading meters in April, uh, was no longer with the city. And. And then we, it took a while to get a new one on, so we had cross-trained. Uh, water, electric crew, meter readers, uh, filling. And then we brought on a new meter reader. And we began to experience by the second month of his tenure, problems. And in that case, that position was terminated. So we have had uh. Three, four months of questionable reads, that is why we are auditing. Every single account. To make, to make sure that's correct. And. It is my responsibility to make sure that gets known.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, can I, can I just add what I said before, Mr. Mayor, um, I'll provide some more explanation, if. If a council member doesn't give up their rights as a citizen when they get elected, and so if somebody wants to speak about their bill, they have a right to do that, but they should do it in their individual capacity as a member of the public. When they're sitting up here as a council member, you should be talking about the problem as a whole in the city, does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Thousand people is a whole lot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, but just want to be careful not to have council members start getting into their own individual bills, because if they're gonna do that. They should speak in their individual capacity.
All right.
Hey, you'll be correct.
All right. Thank you, I think, I think you understand the, the council is saying. Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, um. First off, I, I've heard Mayor Williams say several times that our, first and foremost, our duty is to make. The citizens and the ratepayers' lives better, okay? We didn't on this one, we definitely didn't, um, and I understand that. These ratepayers were charged only for what they used, whether it be, uh, I've heard stories of a negative thirteen dollar and fifty-six cent power bill in the month of July. I mean, if I got that bill, I would know it was wrong. Okay, and, and I would pay more, I wouldn't call on it though. I really wouldn't. For instance, if you have Southwest Gas and you, your average bill is forty-five dollars and you get a bill for seven bucks. Um, we're not gonna, nobody's gonna call on and say, hey, you charged me two, I, I need to pay more, but if you get a bill for a hundred dollars, you're gonna call. I would. Okay, and, and then, when you get that seven dollar bill, that's fine, that hundred dollar bill later on, that's gonna hurt you. Because you thought that seven dollar bill might have been right, now granted, negative thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents, we know that's not right, I, I've worked for the electric department here and I, I. I would have said, not right, but that wasn't, that's not me, I'm talking about myself here, talking about my constituents that have come to me. And I'll reiterate. Mayor Williams has said it several times, first and foremost, our duty is to make the citizens and ratepayers' lives better. And, and we didn't here, and we're making them very, I mean, especially the fixed income people, that, that's, that's tough on them, that is so tough, I, I'm, and. And we need to do whatever we can to help them, I, I, it's step in the right direction, is it enough, I don't know, um, that's up to them if it's enough, really. Uh, and I got another question, and, I don't know, and I was gonna ask it earlier, but um, this COVID money. Did we ever lose our meter reader COVID, ever? Did we ever lose our meter reader to COVID at any point in time?
Question, sir.
Original one, what? I. I would, I would have to research that. And then I've got some.
Just dummy.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, this could get on.
I, I get it, I get it, okay, I'm not asking anybody's name here, asking, did we, you need a reader?
But I will.
You're gonna get into a big lesson.
And that would, that would uh, maybe.
No, 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 what he's trying to point out.
Fix that problem.
If, if, if.
Right?
Just, 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 just a minute, just a minute, he has the floor, okay?
I'm, I'm done, Doc.
Okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Then go ahead, Doc.
The rest of the night.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Campbell.
Hi, this is a really painful situation for a lot of people, I mean, I too have had lots of phone calls from people, and um. I, I have, of course, differing opinions, we all have differing opinions. I know what my electric bill is, I've lived here thirty-eight years, I know what my electric bills are in the summertime, and if I get an electric bill, if I were, and let me tell you, I don't see my bill, so I'm not talking about me. I don't see my bill and I don't pay it, someone else does. But if my bill came in at a hundred dollars in my house for the month of July, I sure the heck would be on the phone going, what is going on? Because I know what's coming next month, we've, if you've lived here long enough, you've had your meter read wrong in the past. It's happened in the past, it's happened other years, for, for many different reasons, we've had our meters misread, and then we got socked. It has happened, this is not the first time it's happened, and this is really unfortunate. And I don't think that our system is set up that we are notified when something goes wrong unless someone. I inquired today as to how many people called and notified the city of their bill being so low. Two, you were one of them, okay, you were one of them, and one other city employee, not one other person in this city called and said, hey, my, my bill is like three hundred dollars less than it should be, and you're gonna kill me next month. Because I know it's gonna kill me next month, so unfortunately, the electric bill is what we used, we as an electric company are only allowed to charge our customers what it costs us. To give it to you, we don't get to make a profit, we only charge you for what you use, our electric rates have not gone up. They're still, that, they are still twelve cents a kilowatt, they have not gone up, but that's for the second tier, I verified that. I do, that's what I'm talking about, it, it is true, okay, I can't, we can't talk back and forth, you have to come up here to talk. Um, so, um, the, um. We have a bill that comes, so we are going to work out and propose a situation.
Just a minute, please, please, would you please return your seat, please return your seat, we'll call you up for a public appearance as soon as uh the council is deliberating.
Okay, so we have, we have hi, we have our hydro power and we have our purchase power, we have a two-tiered system, and when we hit the second tier, it goes up, we're twelve cents a kilowatt. Our, we haven't, the, the electric bills have, our bill has not been raised, it's, it's horrible that we had a meter reader that didn't read the meters, it's horrible. And it is painful, but whether, if they got paid, I'm sorry, if they got read properly on the months they would have, then. then the customers would have been charged that money on that month and then the next month. Unfortunately, this is a big hit. And then what Rick just suggested is that that overage that you didn't get charged for, our customers, me included, all of us, will take that overage if we want to and spread it out over the next twelve months because it was used the month before. We just weren't billed for it. So it isn't, I, we're not, we're not allowed to just give away the electricity.
All right. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Thank you, please. Further deliberation by the council and then we'll have a public appearance, a chance for you to speak again. All right, so let's continue with our deliberation. I think that.
Zach, go ahead. I just have a quick question. On billing, it's monthly. Is it four weeks? Is it three weeks? Is it thirty days? Is it twenty-eight days? What is it they read? Because I've seen thirty-four. And to see thirty-four on someone's bill in the month of August seems to be price gouging to me if you're adding those extra days in the hottest month of the year, so.
Yes.
Longacre, when the meter reader is doing their job properly, it's thirty days.
And when the electric goes in, it'll be every thirty days. When the electric reader goes in, automatic thirty days every time?
Yes, because of what you point out. If they get it done right, it's thirty days. And if they get behind, which, don't underestimate the difficulty of this job. Because while it is not heavy lifting, it is in the absolute heat of the day and.
I've roofed in this weather, I know.
No, I know. But if I'm not roofing, but it is, it is, it is tough. The meter reader walks over five miles a day. Anthony and Pete were sitting here with Teddy. He's already lost two pants. It is a, it is a challenging job. And, but that's a sign when there's thirty-four days on a bill, then somebody fell behind.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans and then. Go ahead.
I was going to ask, you said our rates haven't gone up. But give me a timeline. Where rates haven't gone up.
In the last year?
Yes, all right. Yes. And how much did they go up last year?
It went from.
Fifty percent. I'll help you out there. Fifty percent. They went up fifty percent. Okay, and then we come to another summer. We got these same complaints last year. Did they not go up fifty percent, Rick? They didn't.
They did not. Okay, they did not. But let me, let me give you the facts.
Okay.
January of last year, it was eleven cents. For kilowatt. We were, were doing well and we reduced it to eight. And then it had to go to twelve because the cost of purchased power.
Okay, but you're, you're all, I had to go to, you said we did good, went to eight, right? I get it. I get why they went up. I get why they went up. But what's fifty percent of eight? Well, four. What are they at now? Twelve? That's fifty percent.
All right. I think our job here in the council is to see what we're going to do about this and not complain about. All right. Gentlemen. Gentlemen, please. Councilmember Evans, please. What we want to know up here in our council is what are we going to do for these people? Not complain about what happened or who did what to who or what the rate was ten months ago or twenty-five years ago. Let's talk about how we're going to make it better, what we're going to do to fix it, how soon can we help these people? And, and after, after we have done that, it's our job as councilmen. We'll let the public appear, public talk again. But please, let's try to limit this to what we can do to make things better and, and correct this problem. Please, go ahead.
Respond immediately to those two hundred and fifty who bought a car. Second of all, to do an audit of every single. Any over. And third is to, we are moving into, as Councilman Longacre pointed out, we're starting against, as Kathy mentioned, the installation of the automatic meter. And that'll start within the next couple, three weeks. Being from south to thousands of electric meters that are, that, that will, consumption will be bed electronically and transmitted to the central box. And it will be on a regular schedule. Not only will you be, will it read, but it will be able to give anybody their reading of the moment last month, the same month the previous year. So there'll be a lot easier way to track consumption. And as soon as the water meter or electric meters are in, start with the water.
Thank you.
So it is. Fix the problem as quickly as possible. We've already done a number, I'm going to say eighty changes to people's bills already. But depending on what council acts on them, they have to refer the refund. And then it will be to look at bills of people that might not have realized. And it is consist on correct readings.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Doc.
All right.
To the public about. I know, I know she did.
Can we get our chance?
Or me, yes.
You don't let him talk, Ellen. I just wanted him to reiterate to the public about our meters coming in.
All right. Councilmember Bell.
No, I, I think everybody gets their turn to talk. I agree. I want to hear what we have to say and Zach. This is the only time we get to discuss it, so I believe all, everybody wants to talk and I want to know their opinions because, so even if it's something that's a little bit off, I enjoy hearing the conversation and educate me on things I might not know about. So please, everybody talk up here. This is, that's the point. Second thing, I don't think anybody here ever came up and said, let's trick the public and make their bill higher. So we want to do the right thing. So let's, that's, no, we made a mistake. We're council. I own up to it just as much. This is, my role is to make sure everybody gets a fair and equal living. We try our best. We made a mistake. Unfortunately, our meter readers were human and made some mistakes, so we have to fix our problems. So I think, but the money that we allot also, even if it's twenty-five dollars, still comes out of our general fund, still comes out of everybody's taxpayer money. It's still your guys' money that we're still paying back to yourselves. So that, which takes away from something else. It's not, you know, it's all our pot of money at home, even though you might take it out of the savings for the vacation. It's still your, still your own money. So it, and the more, I mean, I'm all about, I get it. Everybody has, let's figure out the answer. Let's make it over. I like that. Let's spread it out so you don't have to be hit ten, fifteen dollars. If that's too much, then come talk to Rick individually. I'm sure we can make out a plan for five dollars a month if that was the only amount that you could pay. This isn't written in stone. I think we're trying to figure out the best way for each individual. If twenty-five is, is appropriate number or fifty is appropriate number for you, whatever it is for you, we could definitely work that out for you individually. Again, I mean, I think twenty-five dollars is saying, hey, we made a mistake, just like we would charge you if you do a late fee. We are charging ourselves late fee. I like that idea. We'll own up to our mistakes just as well. But nobody here wants to, we're not trying to, this was a mistake, a hundred percent a mistake. We're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to be honest, come up, state what we did was wrong. Let's fix the problem and make it better, but let's work together and do it. I mean, this is our, so we're still all, it's town and a city that we have to, we have to make our budget and we don't want you guys to, nobody to lose the roof over their home because of this either. So I, I like those ideas and I think that's a great start.
Thank you. And I think, think I, I won't keep speaking except that I would like to be having all of you thinking about some kind of a motion so that we can move on with this matter. And then give the public another chance to, if they want to come up again and speak. So go ahead.
So I think that, I, I wish we could do more than the twenty-five dollars, but it does just come out of our pockets anyways. So I think that that is just like a late fee. I think that's good. And I think it should be very important. We don't limit ourselves necessarily to the year. I understand why. But if there is some, I say a year could be standard for repayment, but people who are on fixed incomes, you know, you talk about like, you know, oh, it's that extra forty dollars a month. That's a lot. That's significant. So I think we should allow people to come in and say, hey, this is what I could pay and kind of come up with a contract with the person. Because it's our, it's our problem and it won't be happening as much in the future, hopefully, with the electric meters. But I think that that's what we should do. And if anybody has any specific things that they need to come and talk to the city about with their own bill, I feel like they should be able to and then they could talk to you, Patrick, and you've got you, Rick or Patrick, and, you know, kind of come up with an idea. That's, because we, Doc's right, we need to make this, we need to make this better and right for everybody.
Yes.
Councilman there. Anybody who wants to call me. My phone number is on my phone. I am personally committed to getting this.
All right. All right, thank you. I would like to bring the public in now and let them make one more comment and then I'd like to entertain a motion, have a motion made. Yeah. Oh.
Evans, Councilman Evans, about the automatic metering system.
With the public.
Yeah, yeah, I think that.
Oh, it's on the agenda. You can.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So the city got a grant. The Torrance was able to get that puts in, it's called automatic metering. And what those are, are meters that have a unit on them that transmit your reading electronically to a power hub. And that will tell you how much you're using of the moment. It will tell you how much you used last month or previous months. It will allow you to compare this month to the same month previous year. It also has fraud detection, those who are inclined to put a paperclip in and stop spending. Then we are following up with, as soon as those are all installed, following up with new water meters that will again, you do, perform the same. Okay, how much you using today, how much you used last month, previous months and the same month previous. It also has a safety device where it will identify what's called leak detection. And I think it is through the sound. And the idea for that is that we have people that are here for six months and gone for six months and they come home and find their house is broken. Or that there has been a leak for six months that they weren't aware of. So that leak detection is a safety feature and a consumer protection feature. So those, I think, November, we're going to start with the electric meters. Probably take three, four, five months, maybe six, depending upon supply chain and delivery of parts and pieces. Immediately upon completion of that, we'll go to the automatic water meters. And, and take with large degree, the human element out of it, of this reading numbers transposing money or not getting out of your pickup and going to read the meters and making money. It eliminates.
Thank you.
I think that it's.
All right. I, I think that's nice. No, let's get on with the public hearing now. Yeah, I think you were the first one up.
Just a quick comment that my bill wasn't half cheap. It wasn't fifty dollars versus a hundred and I didn't call. My bill was from one month in June, it went from a hundred and fifty-two to, excuse me, a hundred and fifty-two dollars down to a hundred and five. But I had made some adjustments, so I thought, okay, I'm doing good. I have low LED lights and what have you. And so my bill, like I said, runs about a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I really don't want twenty-five dollars extra for an inconvenience. I think it's more important to not charge a late fee. And I think it would be much simpler. You have Excel, you have programs that could average the four months. Excuse me, look at last year's and that's what I compared mine to. It hasn't, it shouldn't have changed. But what happened is when he didn't or whoever didn't, didn't bill it properly, yeah, maybe it wasn't as much this month, but when you added it to this one, it went into a different tier where I got paid more money. I got charged more money. So if you were to have given it to me correctly, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But when you throw it at, and that's the other thing, without having a message on your bill, and I did call and say, how come? And nobody can answer that question. I, I won't say her name, but she was very helpful to me. And she said, when, I, I told you, I manage the park over there in Verde Shores. So I know that they walk around and I'm sure we're not going to be a part of the automatic, you know, meters because the, oh, we are? Okay, well, that'd be nice because our pedestals are falling over. But I, I know that human error is there. All I'm saying is it isn't us to bear that brunt. We shouldn't have to bear it. And I don't think there's anybody that wants the extra cash, you know? I, I just think that we want to be, we want to pay what we want to pay and you can do that easily by averaging the four months. That's, that's.
Thank you. I think the council agrees with you. Ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry.
You had mentioned, again, Judy Billings, you had mentioned, again, or somebody to call if you have a question. You call and you have a question, they're not going to be able to answer it like you did. They don't know. Obviously, they don't know what's going on because I've called them and I called them twice, which is the second thing. If somebody hasn't called, they're not going to go through the audit? No, you said two hundred and fifty, but say, I know the lady down the street got an exorbitant bill. She didn't call. Is she going to?
Yes, please answer that.
Okay, that's a two fifty.
Then we're going to go back through everybody's bill, whether they call this morning.
Okay, what happens if they call now? Say, they're going to call tomorrow. They're going to go on your list?
First thing I'm going to do is explain to billing office staff what the direction the city council gave. And that will be marked.
Okay. Okay. But, so this person that I know that's down the street, if she calls tomorrow to complain about her bill or ask questions about her bill, she'll be on that list of the two hundred and fifty that are for sure going to be, okay, I'll tell her to call.
I, I can assure you that every single.
Eventually, yeah, but.
Well, but no, it's going to be done as quickly as we can.
Three thousand people, that's going to be a one.
No, we're going to do it as soon as.
Okay.
I'll call.
And you guys, and you already know how you're going to address the extra tier that we've gone up to.
Yes. Yes, because if you didn't use your full hydro allocation.
Right.
Then we will go back and assign that to you. And, and that will drop the rate that you were charged for that particular, most particular kilowatts. And the bill will be recast to bill you at that lower rate. So what you're asking is, yeah, we will make the corrections.
I guess, I guess I'm wondering what the formula is going to be to do that.
Well, we know that what the hydro allocation is for every residence. And if you didn't use yours and then the overage happened at a higher rate, then we'll go back and bill a portion of that at the lower height.
How will you figure out that portion? I haven't been in my place for a year, so.
No, but we, we, we will. No, but we, we, we will.
I mean, and I, I did get, I got it twice.
Yeah.
I got two big bills.
Alright.
Work on this until we can.
Alright.
But it is to do it proper.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Ching. I live at thirteen twenty-five Lowly Hill Drive. I just moved to this town in July. Now, here's the fun part. I rent his house, the former councilman first. His bill averaged for you guys was two forty-one, at least that's what he told me. And he was a very proper, profitable Airbnb. My first bill for the city in Needles was four hundred and ninety-one dollars for two people. Two people, three rooms, but two of those rooms are completely shut it down, vents are shut. That's it. Two people in this house, four ninety-one dollars. I moved from Parker, right, a four-bedroom, nineteen ninety-three mobile home. Absolutely no insulation. My bill there was one eighty-one. My bill in August was four ninety-one. My bill in September was five eleven. To find out from an Airbnb rental that somebody wasn't reading my meter, it kind of devastates me because my bill literally tripled in two months from what I was paying in Parker. And it wiped out my account. Now, you're talking about electric meters. I know all about those, love those things. They do have their downsides when things happen during a storm. But, you know, it's better than having somebody walk around in this heat or not doing it. My problem is, is for somebody like me who just moved here in July, how are you going to reconcile my account? That's under his name from his Airbnb. You can't average that, because I just moved here.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
Years of history.
Oh, yeah, for an Airbnb.
No, before, when it was just, when it was.
Which was three years ago? Sixteen or? Twenty fifteen.
We can, we can, we can go back and bill and find a baseline.
Because from what I understand, a lot of your rentals for Airbnbs are being turned into long-term rentals, and they're being done since June. And that's when this problem started, was June? June, May, May-June, right on there? Which means everybody for, that's been moving into these previous Airbnbs, and there's a lot of them.
We have history for every structure.
So, basically, I need to call you tomorrow and put my address on a right watch list, because my bill is going to have to be reconciled a lot differently than the senior home.
Thank you.
Or the average citizen, because, like I said, just moved here. And it goes through somebody else.
We're sorry for your inconvenience. Barbara?
We're two thirteen Safari. I didn't think I had a problem until tonight. So, I just pay the bill. So, August twenty-nine, I paid four eighty-one seventy-eight, so let's round it off to five hundred. And then, on September twenty-three, I paid three oh four. So, I've got a two hundred dollar discrepancy in two months that were five thousand degrees outside. And I don't set my thermostat for anything under eighty, okay? So, being an old Minnesota girl, literally old also, I usually don't use any heat in the winter either. So, anyway, so now I know maybe I have a problem too. I was going to donate my twenty-five dollars, but I think I'll wait for the audit. So, anyway, I would like for everybody to know who is managing the utility office in the front. And if they talk to that person, I know who it is, I'm not going to say, they should be able to call and ask for that manager, not the girl sitting in, lady sitting in the front taking the money, because they're not in charge. The manager of that little office should be getting direction from the city manager, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, so, when you get direction tonight, then, and she's not here tonight either, I noticed. So, and I'm not asking why, maybe she's got COVID and she's in the hospital. I don't know. So, as long as she knows what those answers are, so that she can direct what is supposed to be said to these people by everybody else. Because there is one person responsible at that front desk for that front office to take these complaints and resolve them now somehow, okay? There was no customer service. That's why I don't have Frontier anymore. I'll never go back to Frontier, because the customer service was awful. And I think our customer service failed here more than anything, because everybody makes mistakes. Customer service is there to help fix these things now. And that didn't happen. And I don't blame the city at all, because people are human, like you're saying. I'm going to look, look for my little twenty-five dollars maybe, but I'm looking forward to the audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Brenda? I'm sorry, why keeps it? That's what, that's what all this time in the city council does to you. Please go ahead, Marion.
I wanted to address Ellen. The museum had an eleven hundred dollar credit. So, we called, we took a picture of the, the meter. We took the meter down to the, the picture, gave it to them, and then we ended up paying a hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, your two people is incorrect. Yeah, it's. But the thing about people that are coming into the thrift store, I think a lot of it is miscommunication, and they don't realize that they, that they're, that they owe the money. They think that they got billed incorrectly, that they didn't use that amount. So, because it was so much in one month. So, somehow, I know Raimi and them, they did a, a letter, but I think that's like, if they would have done what Zach had said, then that would have been better. Because then, when you did look at your bill, you could have saw, you know, okay, I did use this, they just didn't, didn't charge me. But they, in their minds, they, they're not paying it because they never used it.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to remind everyone, we've got a lot of business yet to go. Mr. Campbell?
Eric Campbell, forty-four sixty-nine Bourbon Street. And utility board chair. The recommendation from the utility board, which Rick laid out, was to waive late fees. Get people on a time schedule to make it up to the point, and that have been made by some of the counselors here. Electric meters don't run fast. When they go bad, they run slow. So, this was a human who misread meters or estimated meters on his own solution, and he is no longer employed. But what the utility board was concerned about, and every citizen that is on the three thousand electric meters needs to look at their bills from July and August. Make sure you've got seven hundred and thirty kilowatt hours of tier one energy. That, that equals around, what, forty-three, forty-five dollars? So, everyone should, if you didn't get charged the forty-five in tier one, and you were under red, and then you made up the kilowatt hours in the following month, you need to make sure that you were credited for your full tier one hydro allotment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pastor Jim Jones. One seventy Balboa Place, so I used to use in my P O box. I had that job. I, I, I did that job, this meter reader job, for over four years here. And that was when I wore a much younger man's clothes, and it was about a hundred and fifty pounds lighter. And it is a tough job. We've had a lot of emphasis on this one gentleman, or these two gentlemen's, being bad actors. But when I worked that job, there was a system in place, metering system called Radex. And it was a computerized system, and you take it out, you'd read them, you would read the route, you'd bring it in, you put it on its cradle, it would download. And the first thing when you ran the reports was the out-of-range report. Now, that was nineteen nineties technology. We're now in two thousand twenty-two. So, yeah, I got to think about that too. But there was a cascade of events here. There was more than just a meter reader that missed this. I'm sure there was an out-of-range report, and if it wasn't read or wasn't paid attention to, then this is a, is, is a systematic error that moved from the meter reader on up the food chain to the, the people that work in that office. So, I caution the city manager and the powers that be that, even though we go to these electric, these automated meters that read themselves, if you will, send in the data, there is still the, the possibility for error if people are not paying attention on that end of the bill. So, I caution that. I keep hearing the, the automation, the automation, the automation. There's always a person at some, on some end of this. So, and we, when I was in high school, going through the DOS classes, that we were told junk in, junk out, except for it wasn't that nice language. And then, secondly, only thing I'm hearing tonight is about the electric meters. Well, this same meter reader read the water meters too. So, I don't think you've discovered everything there is to be discovered. Okay? So, if, if this, and if the, if the out-of-range report didn't catch the electric meters, they didn't check, they didn't catch the water meters either. So, I commend you guys for your actions, but I don't envy you in the seats you have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public appearances? Alright, I'm going to return this matter to the city council for their consideration and possible motion. And I think Wade Evans gave me the signal he had to.
Yeah, I'm good now, but I'm because I'm going to go too ahead, and I don't know if I want to make this motion or not, but I think I'm going to. I'm going to make a motion that we we take city manager's recommendation on this, and with one stipulation, the twenty-five dollars turns into fifty dollars when he finds out if he can use the COVID money. Is that?
Not a hundred.
Let me hear if I'm wrong here.
Understandable motion. It could be twenty-five, but if the COVID money's available to be used, then, then, then go on to, up to fifty. Obviously, if somebody was only affected twenty-five, would, would that COVID money be able to give us any more, is the question?
Probably not.
Hundred and fif- ten percent was two hundred and fifty thousand. Right, John?
You know, let me just add, and I'm going to answer your question, Council Mayor and Bill, but Mr. Mayor. So, the, under California Prop two eighteen and Prop twenty-six, which we still have to comply with here, the utility ratepayers that weren't affected can't subsidize those that were, right? It doesn't work like that. But the general fund of the city, where there's a determination by the council that it's in the, in the interests of the public health, safety, and welfare to ensure that people have these continued life-sustaining utilities available, then money from the general fund could be used. Also, on that note, I'm going to pull my motion. And I'm going to hopefully second.
I'm obviously. I'm not ready, I'm not ready for a motion.
Pull my motion.
I'm not ready for a motion.
I will make, I'll make Wade's motions. That we do twenty-five, take the, take what's recommended, twenty-five dollars, and if it turns out that we lost a meter reader due to COVID, and that affected meter readings and started this snowball, and we can use it, that we up it to fifty dollars.
Question?
Yes.
So. We're going to give twenty-five dollars of the general fund to every ratepayer that was affected, just as a, we're sorry? So, does that affect our taxpayers?
Correct.
Haven't, have, have we done this before? Haven't, haven't we done this before?
Kind of.
I'm just asking. We're, we're gifting public funds to our ratepayers, but we're taking the funds from our taxpayers?
So, you would need to, as part of the motion, make a finding that it's in the public health, safety, and welfare interest to ensure continued life-sustaining utilities are available. And for that reason, your, 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 the city would be taking money out of the general fund to cover the twenty-five dollars per affected ratepayer.
Is every taxpayer a ratepayer?
No.
We're robbing Paul to pay Peter.
No motion.
Ellen?
Mr. Mayor, just to respond to that, so cities, especially charter cities, have the ability to take general fund money and use it for things that promote public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And there might be in a particular situation, not this one here tonight, but a situation where that expenditure benefits, you know, people that use parking wreck services, or that use other services, and maybe everybody, we have a golf course, certain people use the golf course, not everybody uses the golf course. So, the fact that not everybody's going to benefit from those general fund expenditures doesn't preclude the city from.
Alright.
Alright, then I'll make that motion.
I, I move to go with the, the.
Pardon?
I didn't withdraw my motion.
Did you make a motion?
Did, I made a motion.
No one's second yet.
But, John, John.
Okay, go ahead.
I had all this other purpose to say, what John said.
Dale, do you have?
What John said.
To talk about the twenty-five dollars, and if we could use COVID money, but if it's fifteen, then John.
In the interest, in the, in the interest of health and safety, so that our citizens will be able to continue to have their electricity without interruption and not cause a tremendous hardship on them. We have the discretion to take money from our general fund to help them.
That was health, safety, and welfare.
Take twenty-five bucks off their bill and call it a day. Why are we sending them money?
It's.
That's the motion.
That's what we're doing, is taking twenty-five dollars off the, it's a credit. That, that's what it is. It's a twenty-five dollar credit.
So, you have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion.
Okay, I'll second that one.
And we have a second. Did you need any explanation? No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
And twenty-five only?
We find a way to get, use the COVID money. How about just twenty-five? Okay. Yeah, twenty-five dollar credits due to health, safety, and welfare. Twenty-five dollars. Twenty-five dollar credit. Then I'll second the, only twenty-five dollars.
Okay, we're not going to go.
And the other and the other, they can pay it off over no penalties, no fees. And it can, no turnoffs, and they could pay it over, do we have to have the year? Are we saying a year? Are we saying longer, if they can only afford five dollars a month? At the discretion of each, they, up to a constant.
Alright, alright, I think the only person that really needs to understand this is Dale.
I think we all need.
So, Dale, if you would read back the motion, please.
We all need to understand what we're voting on.
No penalties during this time when we're auditing all the bills. No turnoffs, and allow payment plans for up to a year.
And people can work out their own bills, they can come in and talk on.
So, that's a motion, it's a second.
She's not true.
I think the year has to be, can't be black and white. But that's, yeah, I don't think it's black.
It happens again.
Use discretion, okay. Discretion. I'll second it.
So, a first and a second, Mayor.
Yes, second it. Okay, hell, seconds it.
COVID, yeah, any discussion? Are you through?
I think I am.
Okay. Okay, permanent discussion. Did anyone have anything else to add?
Dale's going to reread the motion so that we're clear.
Okay.
Credit every account, a dollar. Credit every account a dollars. Due to the public health and safety and welfare. No penalty, sorry.
We're gonna credit all account holders the twenty-five dollars on their bill because of the public health and safety welfare issues. There will be no city penalties assessed on your bills. There won't be any turn offs during this audit period. And the payment plans are up to a year, however, this management can use discretion.
Correct.
It's just be.
That it?
That it?
That's it.
Anyone else? Any discussion? Okay. COVID?
We should have looked into that.
Okay.
We'll bring it back on COVID.
Very good. We have a motion in the second, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Okay, we have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
No.
Thank you.
And did you wanna take the, uh, mayor's, uh, vote on this item, given that it's both?
Oh, excuse me, yes, your honor.
Yes. Item number four. NPUA action, approval of the maximum allowable five percent cost of living COLA increase in water and wastewater basic service charge rates as of November first, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
You hated tonight, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Take a break.
And, uh, during the last year, the utilities, uh, cost, uh, went up uh, twelve point eight percent. Twelve, excuse me, twelve point five percent. Uh, the overall consumer index, consumer price index went up eight percent. The city conducted a rate study three years ago, at which it identified what the rate should be, and then identified that there would be a cost of living adjustment that would occur on an annual basis, but never exceed five percent. So our costs went up twelve. CPI went up eight, but we're capped at five percent increase to the base service charge. The base service charge is thirty some dollars. It's not the overall, uh, cost of, of, of the water service charge, the water consumption or electric consumption. The so it is, it is a limited, a limited increase. The NPUA has had problems in the past with not collecting the true amount, the cost to operate, pay the debt, the private, or the the capital improvements and true reserve for emergencies such as the D Street blowout, manifold failure and the lot, the lot. Overall, our infrastructure system, which includes the utilities and ingredients, are in a terribly, terribly dilapidated condition. We have a water system last year that had over two hundred and fifty water leaks. And that's more than one per workday, and that's increasing about ten percent per year as the water system ages underneath it. The D Street Bridge blew out, uh, blowout happened two years ago. Uh, and that section of the transmission line had not been maintained in fifty years. Our reservoirs are maxed out at about twenty-four to thirty-six hours of water storage. That's an incredible amount of vulnerability to everyone in this community when you live in the middle of a mob investment. We are short on storage. Our wells are insufficient. Two to three, according to the state, are contaminated, and they will not allow that water to be used. Uh, well, eleven and well twelve. Additionally, last summer, we had a lightning strike on the sole remaining well. And that well, we lost for about twenty-two hours, and we're within, uh, two hours of our reservoirs being empty. The evolving deterioration of our infrastructure has been known since two thousand. When there was an engineering report that said that there was forty million dollars of preventive maintenance improvements that were needed. Things have gotten worse since that time due to the passage of time, aging of the infrastructure, and now with this new inflation caused by federal spending. Until recently, our streets have not received any treatment. We, there was a, other than topple patch. In nineteen ninety-six, the city did, uh, a paving program and has not had the funds available to do routine preventive maintenance, uh, that entire time. So what we've seen is a slow deterioration of paved streets as the oil byproducts evaporate out, they are slowly returning to gravel roads. And especially in this climate, again. Uh, most of our street signs are so deteriorated that it's on a subject. It, or missing that it jeopardizes public response, public safety response time. A lot of our traffic control signs are so faded and deteriorated that they may be unenforceable. So the cause of this has been the lack of setting rates to fully cover the operations, maintenance, the operation, the maintenance, the capital improvements, the, uh, debt that we have, and have a prudent emergency reserve. And rebuilding the system will be, will involve costs in multiples of regular maintenance. So regular maintenance is by far preferred. Let me give an example, it costs a dollar square foot to slowly seal a street. And if you do that every five to eight years, you keep that street, the condition, because the structural integrity and the sealability of any rain getting into the street is maintained.
Well, we're on wastewater, right?
Again, watering with water here.
And, but as opposed to, if I'm, I'm using the street as an example, when you rebuild, the street is forty dollars. So the, the city and the NPUA has done some things that give reason for optimism. Uh, but it's just scratching the surface of what needs to be done. The, the cannabis industry has generated, last year generated five million dollars of funds which are primarily under policy doubt by the council, being spent on streets and water line replacement, as you saw in the pictures tonight, when we paved the street, we went and replaced, uh, the water services. Uh, last year, we secured eight hundred and eighty thousand of federal funding, uh, for local streets up near the schools. We had secured eight million for Northern Eagles Highway construction. We secured fourteen point two million dollars for the equivalent of seven thousand one hundred dollars per customer in water grains. And the grants that are a hundred percent paid for by state funds, and there is no uh, ratepayer money that's going into. We have pending a five million dollar grant for a new million gallon, uh, reservoir. We also have seen uh, in terms of new businesses being created. And remember, government, other than the federal government only gets its money from taxpayers to close loop. Federal government is the only one that can print money. And they do. And the overuse of that printing press has caused unprecedented inflation that goes back a decade, maybe two. To the, to the point that it is eating up our grains. So we are, none of these are easy, easy choices. So when the voters created the NPUA in nineteen ninety-six, it borrowed sixty-eight, sixty-five million dollars and used a bond document that was approved through the Security Exchange Commission. And it required the NPUA to set and maintain sufficient rates to assure that the NPUA maintains the infrastructure necessary to generate the revenue to pay their money back. Uh, failure to set the rates and fulfill the fiduciary responsibilities will lead to insolence. Best long-term solution is to grow the community, increase the jobs and revenues, produce private investment, and maintain the lowest possible cost. The the utility rate produ-, uh, proposal um, on the electric side, looks at reducing the conservation tax, looks at increasing overall hydro allocation, uh, but also looks at a one penny per increase. What, as we've seen in years past, when you don't take the five percent, the cost is twelve, we're only gonna increase the service charge five percent, that, uh, you never get that back. Because it's forever lost, that you can never uh, overcharge. So what we're looking at between the two agenda items in front of you are water and wastewater to make a five percent increase in the, uh, the basic service. And that rate for water and wastewater will cause an increase of about six dollars and eighty-five cents per home per month. For the typical single family home. When you, when you look at the electric, we have increased the amount of hydro that people will have. And, and we, we shifted the hydro to play a bigger role during the summer months. So there's a greater allocation during the summer. And the use is up. The state taxes, uh, dropped a, from three tenths of a cent to two tenths of a cent. But the hydro, the over hydro rate is proposed to go up, uh, one penny. The grand total of the rates that are proposed and recommended by the utility board, which has this authority to do so, total eight dollars and eleven cents per month for the typical home. Say it again. All in, even with a penny added it's to the electric consumption. It's an increase of eight dollars and eleven cents per month for typical single family home.
Uh, pardon me, are you including the electric, uh,
Yeah.
rate increase, item number five with item number four?
For the purposes of this general presentation, yes.
Okay.
But, uh, can go back and just address, uh, water and utility, because we need to take two actions. Uh, where you're being asked to take two actions. One is water and wastewater, and the second is.
You, you can combine the staff report, as the city manager has done, and then combine the public comment.
All right, why don't we do that? Would you mind doing that?
I think, I think there's been a consolidated, uh, utility rate presentation so far. I'd be glad to answer any questions about what I've said or in any of the, but let's start with the water.
Okay, councilmember Evans?
Water and wastewater, okay, yes, um. But I understand with us, you know, fixing a lot of streets around town, I understand we're gonna be replacing a lot of water lines. I get it. If that costs a lot of money, are we replacing any sewer lines?
Uh, our sewer lines are in, uh, much better shape. We're not replacing sewer lines because they're not needed.
Some of the manholes are screwed up.
What we have done is, uh, and your council has approved of order the contracts. I think we've done six, eight, uh, re-lining of those, uh, manholes. Uh, and, uh, visual repairs. Yeah, but our sewer system is in a much better condition than our water system.
Okay, so, no. Any other questions or comments by the council? And I'll open the matter to public hearing?
They're talking.
Not.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't.
The answers, the answers, no. But we, we had to do last year some, uh, major repairs down at the wastewater treatment plant.
You said six dollars take, uh, increase in service charge. Were you combining water and wastewater?
Yes. Your honor.